Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. Time is now 7:01 PM, starting a little bit late here. To call this meeting to order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berry, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. This time, I'd like to invite everyone to pause for a moment of reflection. Next agenda item is to establish voting members at this time. I believe we will need to add Ms. Duda as an alternate, based on the folks that we have here. So do we have a motion to add Ms. Duda as a voting? All right. All in favor? There you go. Okay, well, second? There is your second. There you go. Vote again. All in favor? All right. Thank you for keeping me in line. Additions and deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to add or remove?
Chairman, I make the recommendation that we accept the agendas presented.
Wait a second. Second, all in favor? All right, there we go. Which brings us now, I guess there's no additions or deletions, so does that count as the approval of the agenda? I suppose it does both. All right, brings us to agenda item, rezoning KCZ 2022-005, Stonebridge Enclave. And at this time, anyone wishing to recuse themselves? Obviously, Mr. Berry?
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
All right, do we have a motion to allow these two gentlemen to recuse themselves? Second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Bjorn, welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. We have a rezoning KCZ 2022-005 called the Stonebridge Enclave. Rezoning, this is a conditional rezoning, is a request to rezone approximately 44 acres to build a 50-unit development with an average of 10,000 square foot lot sizes and net density of 1 and 1/4 units per acre. This is a conditional rezoning. There's a site plan associated with the rezoning and a request to have five-year vesting, and they would still have to meet all requirements of the unit by development ordinance for Union County. Existing conditions on Rocky River Road, south of 75, it's looking north, sites on the left here, it's across the street, see agricultural, looking south, seeing the power line crossing the site, and then the site itself, there's an existing manufactured housing park on site, approximately eight homes, they would be removed as part of this rezoning. In terms of development status, this is the parcel itself, one in light green, and you can see where the structures are located on the site, and Stonebridge Development is to the south, the hashed green is the permanent open space, which is the golf course. In terms of the environmental features on the site, there is a stream on the northern edge, otherwise it's forested, with the exception of where the residences are located. Zoning in the area, this is from the GOMAP site, you can see, here's the recent roundabout at Rocky River and 75, this is the site itself, zoned RE40. Mineral Springs is to the west, they were not contacted as part of this because they weren't within proximity of the rezoning itself, and then you have some commercial at the intersection at Rocky River and 75, otherwise the whole area surrounding it's RE40. In terms of transportation, this site, even though it is on Rocky River Road, it wouldn't get access directly from Rocky River Road, it'd actually be served as an, from a stubbed-out road to the south, from the existing Stonebridge Development, so the Rocky River traffic volumes are not directly relevant to this rezoning because the overall Stonebridge site has ultimately three different roads that it connects to. But Rocky River Road doesn't have a funded improvement along it, the roundabout up at 75 was completed in the last couple of years. In terms of the land use plan, the purple area is the employment corridor that is along all of NC 75 from the state line to Monroe. It is an overlay, it doesn't mean that every parcel within there is appropriate for employment uses. The underlying land use recommendations is for rural residential, 75 is really the break point between suburban residential, which would be two-plus units per acre, single-family generally, and rural residential, which is one unit per acre. Public feedback, there was a community meeting held on October 19th, there were no attendees, we haven't received any phone calls or emailed comments about this rezoning, we did not request feedback from the town of Mineral Springs. And in terms of our staff report and recommendation, the negative of it is that it exceeds the recommended density for this type of land use in the county. I will note that this board did receive recommendations from the implementation committees from the Conference of Plan Implementation regarding rural character, particularly regarding clustering, which this development really is, and there was a density bonus associated with that, that this would be essentially consistent with, but this board did not look favorably on the density bonus aspect of it. So, and it hasn't been to the county commissioners, so it isn't relevant to use as a reference for making a recommendation for approval. We would note that in terms of the positives, there are utilities present for this site, there is an existing pump station to the site that, per county commission policy, would have to be revisited for approval by them, but that's something that would happen after a rezoning were to occur. Nearby schools do have available capacity, they are all below 100%. Density is consistent with the remainder of the Stonebridge Development, it's approximately one unit per acre, although lot sizes are smaller, it gets a significant amount of credit due to the golf course. And the development will have access to multiple road connections, so from a transportation perspective, it will be distributed through the local road network. However, due to the density considerations and the fact we don't have any kind of mechanism via cluster provisions to accommodate this proposal, we would recommend denial of this rezoning. The applicant and their staff, or site engineer, are available to answer questions. If you want to, be happy to pull up the site plan of this development, say it's something to point to, but I'm sure they're going to hit it as a part of their presentation as well, so we can go either way with that.
Any questions for Bjorn at this time?
Go ahead. I noticed in the application, and maybe this is what you were mentioning just a minute ago about the cluster, but originally it said the proposed zone designation was R15 cluster, but then it was reidentified as R4 with conditions. Is that because of the?
Well, it's because the initial intent was to take advantage of the overall Stonebridge Development, which does have a lot of the amenities that would be required as a part of the cluster provisions within Union County. So we said that the individual rezoning needs to stand on its own, this isn't technically a part of the Stonebridge Development, so that bundle of amenities weren't going to be provided within the site, so we said you can do the same thing, just call it an R4 development with conditions, and you'll essentially get the same thing, which is what happened.
For tonight, it's R.
That's correct. I did, I did make a mistake, it was correctly put out to the letters to the public, it was correctly presented in the staff report, but I did fail to do that in the agenda item itself of correcting it from an R15 to an R4, so thank you for noting that.
How many folks were notified?
Approximately a dozen, I can pull up the map of the parcels that were notified. It's less than what you might think, because while Stonebridge is immediately to the south, the property that's immediately to the south is unplatted yet, it hasn't been developed as a part of that phase, so the number of properties that would be notified would be less than it would be in, say, a couple of years from now.
Bjorn, I drove by that area today, coming over from Waxaw.
I did not see the zoning sign about them being rezoned.
That's correct.
Can you pull that up and show us about where that sign was placed?
It hasn't been placed yet.
Tonight's, for tonight's?
Yeah, that is because the posting requirements are only for the public hearing, for the Board of Commissioners. I know we have done that in the past, and honestly, we had kind of a change of heart about that, that it was prejudicial against the applicant, especially if it was a controversial rezoning, that we were giving too much notice. There's a window, what is it, please correct me, 15 to 25 days?
There's a statutory requirement that you can't post the rezoning sign more than 25 days before the public hearing.
The public hearing, this is not the public hearing.
This is probably not going to come out right, Mr. Chairman, so what we're saying is that the people that live in Stonebridge by the golf course, since it's going to be part of Stonebridge, everything's going to be hooked into their water, sewer, et cetera.
That's correct.
They have, they don't need to be notified of this?
They were notified through the properties that are adjacent to it, so you had this property, which is technically owned by True Homes, I believe that's a true statement, plus the adjacent properties, so whether these, all these properties were notified, that would, that would be only if the HOA was notified by virtue of.
Do you know if HOA was notified of it?
I can't answer that question. Only the list that we use, so no additional properties were notified beyond that.
Okay, and this is going back to the previous denial of this land a couple of years ago? The, let's see, just, it calls for about eight mobile homes on the property, is that right?
We drove through there about a month ago, and that was, that was what we saw.
Okay, have those people been notified?
The property, the property owner would have been notified, that was whether they would notify the individual properties.
Well, you know, the last time, they didn't notify them in time, and that was the reason that this board turned it down.
We, we notified the property owners, that's, that's the ripple-through communication process. They will be notified, I mean, they'll obviously know by virtue of the sign being in the property, which will occur within the week to hit the 25-day window.
That's something that was, that was discussed, like, you're exactly right, the last time at the meeting, we talked about that, and, you know, it's ultimately that the property owners is who we, that's the address that we have, we don't know who the renters are or how.
Absolutely.
But ultimately, it's that property owner's responsibility to notify those folks. I don't know if the property owner or the applicant notified the folks that live in the mobile home.
Were they notified? Have they been notified?
My name is Keith Finn, I'm with True Homes, and the owners, not owners, well, I guess they are owners of their mobile homes, but they're notified by default when the land owner purchased it. So we, as True Homes, don't own that parcel of land, our developer arm owns it, Carolina Development Services, so they will be developing it for us, we're responsible for entitlement and purchasing finished lots, if that makes sense. So, so they've, when they purchase that land, those mobile homeowners know that it will be completely revamped into something different, that we, the intention was to build homes there, so they are aware of that.
Well, folks, I've got a problem with that. We've already made, set a precedent, the last time we turned it down, because they weren't notified, and I don't remember who owned the land, didn't own the land, or anything like that, and they were just going to expect us to approve something without those people living on, where they're renting, or whatever the case may be, that was like kicking them out with no place to go, and giving them as much chance, especially with this economy and inflation, interest rates and things like that, to try to find a place.
I remember that one.
Pardon?
I remember that one, they gave them 30 days.
Yeah, it was 30, they had to have a 30-day notice, but they didn't do it.
It was a 30-day notice, they had to get out within 30 days because they were going to develop that land, it's like, that's not right.
If I can interject on that, so a permitting and entitlement process, from our experience, usually takes 18 to 24 months, so even if you approve it today, we will not be touching dirt there until I get all of my approvals, which has to go before Union County. So the notification will actually start when that rezoning sign goes up, and we have no problems informing them, also from a public perspective, for the public hearing, we have no qualms on informing them.
Well, I just want to go on record that I, I think that we're doing apples over on this side, now we're, today we're doing oranges over on this side, and I think that there needs to be some kind of uniformity in this. That's my thought on it. So, I don't know how we solve this, and maybe it can't be solved, maybe I'm a majority of one that feels that way. What do we say, Charlie?
Well, did the property change hands since the last time we talked about it?
Yes.
Okay. It's my understanding then, from what they've described, that when the property changed hands, that the tenants that were there were informed that at any time, this property could be, could be developed, and that wouldn't include leaving the, the housing that's there now in place. So, in my mind, they've had, they've had a good long while since they've been notified, and they've chosen to continue to live there, so I'm.
I respect that.
I think they have, I think they've gotten those.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any additional questions for Bjorn at this time, before we move on to the applicant?
I have one more, I'm sorry. Can someone educate me on a five-year vesting of development rights?
That means that since this is a conditional zoning, the site plan, what's the default? Two years? Two years would be the automatic amount, but you, under state law, you have the ability to request up to five years. That means that they have the right to hold on to this for five years before acting on it.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't, it also doesn't mean that the rezoning goes away, so the county commissioners, ultimately, the group of zoning that they take, you know, to the county, you know, put the false part of, you know, they sit on it for 10 years, the R4 conditional would still be in place, but if there were any changes to ordinance in that time period, they would be subject to whatever changes were, so that, that five-year vesting would vest them to what the ordinance said they would.
And it gives, it gives the property owner assurances that they have a plan that they can move forward with, but it also balances that with, they can't just hold it forever, because what happens is the county's land use plan changes, and all of a sudden, this area is much more appropriate for industrial, or commercial, or high-density residential, and this would be inconsistent with that. If the county commissioners were so inclined, they could rescind that conditional rezoning for it after the five-year period, if no, if no effort had been made to implement that plan as approved.
Okay, thank you.
Is this another phase of Stonebridge? Is that what this is, or?
If I were buying a home there, it's going to look like it, but as this is being presented to you, it is not, it is a standalone development that is getting access through Stonebridge.
Okay, is there another access, it's another stubout on the top of it?
We have requested a stubout to the northwest, yes.
So it can go into another?
That's correct.
But there's nothing there right now, but in the future, they could build again?
That's correct, and that could, I mean, I think the, let me go back to a map, so if, I believe the stubout was to the west here?
This one?
Or to the north?
It's here.
Okay, to the north, so as land over here develops.
Bjorn.
There you go, there you go, thank you, that helps. So yes, as development occurs, this can be stubbed out, and again, provide further distribution of traffic.
And so with this one here, it's only one in, one out? They have to go through Stonebridge to get into this?
That's correct.
And I will say, there's two ways to also answer your question, from our standpoint, did it not part of Stonebridge, because it's a separate application. From their standpoint, it may be, and I don't know the answer to that, so that would be a question to ask them, they may be, you know, through restricted covenants and homeowners' association and whatnot, they may be tying it to Stonebridge and allowing these residents to use those amenities, so from our standpoint, it's not, but it might be there, so you might want to ask that question.
Thank you, Lee, thank you, Bjorn. This time, I'd like to call the applicant. Since you've already identified yourself, that's not necessary again.
Good evening, thank you for hearing our rezoning, conditional. Just want to walk you through the intention here and what we're trying to do here for this particular parcel of land. You'll notice on the site plan itself, it is 50 units. What we've tried to do here is assimilate a very similar design and feel as the rest of Stonebridge, so for our purposes, this would be an additional neighborhood. Currently, there are two existing, I'm sorry, three existing neighborhoods, and we are currently building two more neighborhoods, and then this will be an additional neighborhood to that future proposed, which is below. So the black and white isn't built yet, what you see below there, we're building that today, and then this would be a continuation into this other section. So this would be an extension of Stonebridge. At the end of the day, when you're driving through the neighborhood, you'll never know that it was a separate parcel of land, it will all look like one neighborhood, or one community, rather, and they will still have access to all of the amenities that are given to all of the other residents as well. The size and the feel is going to be very similar, the houses will be identical in terms of the offerings, so again, there's no discrepancy or no difference there. One of the things that we tried looking at here was really respecting the open space. So you'll, I don't know if you can see the table on the side, it's hard to see, but we're giving 58% open space on this design. If we were to build this by right, in other words, if we weren't in front of you trying to do a rezoning, you would have no open space. I would use every piece of land, and I wouldn't be required to put any open space. But in this design, we're taking 58% of the land, and it is all undeveloped, and it will remain that way. The stub road, it was a request from planning staff, so we actually added that stub road per their request. The other thing to point out here is the density, and right now, this proposal is 1.25. I will point out, and I'll show you with this next slide here, this is the overall Stonebridge. The blue are existing neighborhoods, those houses and those neighborhoods already exist. The purple is what we're building today. You'll notice that there's an entrance off of Doster, there's an entrance off of Old Waxaw, Monroe, and there's an entrance off of South Rocky River. You know, as Bjorn mentioned, there's three access points to this entire community. And to the north, in that peach color, that's the 50 lots that we're trying to rezone today in front of you. So you can see that the semblance is all very similar, is contiguous, and what we did was, with my engineer Francis here, with Seaman Whiteside, we had them calculate the densities here, and the purple area comes out to, and again, if you're looking at the purple area by itself, it's 1.67, so it's a higher density. We're requesting 1.25. Now, when we looked back, and the planning staff actually helped us with this, looking way back, was it 1998?
96.
96 was when the Smart Growth Plan was all put together as a master, I'll go back to that, and they included the golf course as part of the density units, and it brings it down to 1.25. So we're asking for 1.25, this would technically be, or for all practical purposes, the same, so it's the same 1.25. We were initially, when we got this parcel of land, we were going to try to push it up to 1.7 to match the 1.67, but after having conversations with Lee and Bjorn, we figured, you know what, let's try to go with the concept of that 25%, let's keep it in check, let's keep it the same, since it's 1.25, so this is pretty much consistency, and that's what we're looking for here. In case the question comes up with sewer, I know that comes up a lot, we're in the 12-mile creek area for the wastewater treatment plant, we know that they're at capacity, but this is their plan, this comes straight from Public Works. If you notice in the red block, they will be adding 3 million gallons per day, which is more than enough for our small development, and they're going to be completed in 2025. With our rezoning and the timeline of permitting and the timeline of construction, we would pretty much tie in as far as completion to that same point of time.
Mr. Finn, if I may, do you know if this project for the additional wastewater treatment capacity has been funded by the Board of County Commission yet?
From my understanding, they've already started. The land in pre-designed has already been funded, and they've been spending money on that, the design is underway with the completion of April of next year, so they're already spending money. So I can't speak to specifics as where, if it's been funded or not, but they're, they're following.
Bjorn, do you know if it's been funded?
I mean, design is funded and is underway, but construction has not.
Construction has not been funded?
That's a subsequent decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I was not aware. And the other thing to consider is, and we ran into this, let me go back to here, when we were going for permits through Public Works for this purple section, the right-hand side, we were, we were five lots over on the capacity limitation for the wastewater treatment system. So what we did was, we removed five lots from the entire development to hit the actual capacity, and then they released more capacity, which allowed us to move forward with the additional five lots, which is that little stub road that would go to this new parcel. So at the end of the day, even if we get, we get permits, there would be a condition to the permit, typically from Public Works, which puts us in line, so if the capacity comes, we'd just be next in line, but we can't do anything till we get that, if that makes sense.
How many units are in that purple section?
230.
230? That's being built now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And let me put a caveat to that, so it's kind of an indirect reference to the economy and the things that are happening today, so the intention is, we are, we're developing the whole thing, and we're starting to build homes. Our first home actually will be started probably next week, our very first one in that section. So depending on where things go, our development speed will be based on that, if that makes sense. But with that, that was pretty much all I had to show, if you guys have any specific questions, we'd more than happy to answer.
Tom, any questions for Mr. Finn?
I do.
Yes?
So what value does this add to the area in Union County by adding this other cluster, in your opinion, especially based where we are now?
The ones that we're proposing today? Well, the value is to add more homes, great, we know we are all in a supply-constrained market, there are not enough homes for the amount of demand that's here. Right now, the supply's about two, and you would need six months of supply to be on normal supply-demand ratios, so we're like a third of that, so with the demand, we're helping to kind of provide some of the supply and relief.
And you've tempered that based on, oh, I'm sorry, sorry about that, guys, and like you said before?
You're tempering that based on what's happening in the world today with inflation and whatnot?
Yeah, we are very much paying attention to everything, not only on a weekly basis, but almost on a daily basis, so we, we're just trying to navigate through those murky waters. It's very unique, we haven't been in this situation before, it is nothing like 2008, fortunately, right, not like Wood. But at the same time, we're fortunate, all of us here, to be in this area of North Carolina, you know, everyone's in migrating, they're coming from other areas, so that's kind of helping fuel the development and allow us to keep pace with that.
Now, you said 58% is going to be undeveloped for that, is, so does that mean you're not going to go in and clear everything from?
I only clear where I need to build a house.
Okay, but the other areas have been completely cleared?
When you say other areas?
Well, you're, the other developments, is that correct?
The purple area?
Yeah, the purple.
Yes, and you'll notice, there's really no opportunity to have saved anything, because of all the grading and then just exchange of the dirt and the movement of the dirt, but in this case... But in this case, for this parcel that's before you today, I don't have to touch any of that. Yep.
I got a question for Lee. This purple section, when was that approved?
Nineties, like late 90s, early 2000s. This was an old type of development, called smart growth, exchange for open space and some other amenities. They, you know, were able to get 25% density, that's why they were talking about the 1.25 units. That option, so it used to be an option under the old land use ordinance. That option went away, I think, in 2007, 2008 timeframe. When it went away, there were several developments that had been, you know, approved previously to the board. When they did away with it, they chose to vest those projects perpetually. And they basically said, if you have a plan into the planning department, that project is vested, basically, forever.
That was my next question. How long do we give them to build out?
They were vested forever. And, you know, if the economy were to stay strong in the early 2000s, or the late 2000s, I guess, those projects would have probably been built out a long time ago, but in a recession, and a lot of those projects tripled back in slowly as it's done with. So there were a couple of, I think, not, sort of, the blue ones on the left side of the page, were some of the first two that came back, and then the purple ones have been more through process and the process of time.
If I'm reading between the lines on the pace and the ability to sell and purchase homes, let me just kind of preempt that with, the blue section two years left, that kind of loop road, it's been Green Lane, we built that two years ago. That was us, and we sold that very quickly. We are now, we opened up our new section, which is off of Old Waxaw Monroe Road, and we're already selling those relatively quickly. So the market demand is still there. We don't anticipate that falling off, even with mortgage interest rates going up. There are buyers that are specifically looking at these areas, and because of the fact that these areas, the purple areas, now have golf front lots, that has more of an appeal, if that makes sense. So we're in a very good circumstance here, which is why we started looking at this parcel above it as an extension, because we realized that this is a very viable neighborhood. It's a viable community.
Any additional questions for Mr. Finn at this time? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I would open the floor to public comments. Having no one signed up, I would like to close the floor to public comments. I'd like to encourage, at this time, discussion among the board. Your thoughts?
Well, I do have, I do take issue with the notification situation. I do hear that there's been a new owner, and the people that live there are aware that something's going to happen. But it still concerns me that for this meeting tonight, people aren't getting the opportunity to actually, because they don't know it's now. Unfortunately, some people have to be hit over the head to understand that. So that does concern me. The other things are, is we sit here as stewards of controlled and smart growth for Union County, and I feel that there's a saturation point. And I feel that for this particular area, to Bjorn's point when he first presented, I think it's inconsistent for the character of the area and also what we're trying to do for this area. So I would probably agree with the staff's recommendation on this one.
Any other thoughts at this time?
I'm not crazy about perpetuity. I mean, things are out there forever. And like, we get hammered for it now, with this stuff that's being built now, because somebody else decided, you know, well, we'll let them build whenever the hell they want to build it. You know, it's like, I'm not crazy about that. Do we still have that on the books, or is that something that's...
That was a Board of County Commissioner's decision when the smart growth option was taken away. So that should have stayed.
So it's not there anymore?
Smart growth is not there anymore. That option is gone, but any development that was approved, or had a plan in for review under that standard was vested. So once those projects are done, you won't have any more smart growth projects coming forward.
So this one that's coming in now, it's not in that?
No, this rezoning is not.
So what's the timeframe on something like this now?
Asking for five years.
It has to be five years.
Up to five years to build it?
No. To basically, so vesting rights, you have, I promise, I'll try to keep this short. You've got statutory vesting, which are called out in statutes, minimum of two years, and that's basically to sort of get start. You have to show a good faith effort to start the project. I'm drawing a blank on what the second count's called, but there's also, basically, as long as you're spending money and moving a project forward, that's also considered to be vested. So let's say they're approved and you give them five, or, you know, the Board of County Commissioners give them five years. If they start working on it, and you're, say, say the economy, you know, improves, and, you know, they start working on it, and you're four, as long as they continue to work on it, so as long as they continue to move that project forward, it stays vested. There's support cases that talk about, you know, when a project is vested, when it's not vested. As long as you're continuing to move a project forward, then it's vested. Now, if they wait five years and don't do a thing, it's not vested.
The HOA has nothing to say about it? How long it takes to build it, to build out? Because where I look, the HOA had say in it.
Like, for the neighborhood?
Yeah.
That would be completely up to the restricted covenants and the HOA. We can't regulate homeowners association.
Right.
So that can be, I've seen, homeowners association rules are different, yours are different than, you know, somebody else's, so we don't regulate that, we don't review them, we don't remove them, just can't regulate them.
Bjorn, based on this 50-unit development, about how many more cars will that add on the Rocky River and then on to the street or road in front of Stonebridge Golf Course? It would either take them back to Rocky River, or it would take them into Meadow Springs by the Methodist Church.
So the rule of thumb is, for a single-family house, 10 trips per house per day?
How many?
I'm sorry?
What did you say?
10.
10?
So 10 times 50 is 500. You have three access points that are available to distribute traffic. I can't say which ones are going to go where, because it really depends on the demographics of the people living there. You have families, they're going to be oriented towards Parkwood Cluster to get their kids to and from school potentially. Whether it's an older demographic, may not have as much of a work interest during the day. It's going to be, you know, for recreational or just medical activities. So to say what's going to go to each individual one, it's, realistically, I would start with a third, a third, a third, which is not much.
May I mention one more thing?
Sure.
I just want to let people know that we looked at this as a by right as well. So we did a lot of fit study, if you will. I had our engineer look at this multiple ways. We've probably gone through five different iterations, just to see what works best here. When we looked at it by right, again, we try not to rezone unless we have to. But when we looked at it by right, I believe we got about 43 houses, but we got rid of all of the open space. So there is an alternative for me, that we can go through that route. I lose seven houses, which I'd rather not, but we do lose all the open space. And we really want to preserve that open space. I feel it gives it a nice buffer, it gives it the exclusionary component. So I just want to throw that out there, just as a reference, just kind of, just the big picture, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Hang on, before you sit down?
Sure.
The area that you're requesting to build, when you come around the curve and you're going straight down, there's a big, heavy, black line. Can you explain what that is?
Are you talking right at the property line?
It's, I can't read that word. If you come into the development, and you come around the curve?
Yep.
See the big, heavy, black line, and it's right in the middle?
Oh. Yeah, that's open space, yeah. We would probably have an easement there, or something like for drainage, or something like that. The other thing to reference, I know if you look at the right-hand side of the purple, that entire area is undeveloped, will never be developed, and that's also considered open space. We'll never be coming back to do anything on that.
So on the acreage that you have there, how much is actually buildable based on water issues or stuff like that?
Well, the good news for us is, the pond in the purple that abuts the parcel in question actually has capacity, excuse me, to handle the off-site water, which means I don't need to build all those ponds. We're doing it just because it's a backup, we haven't done full designs, and we're not sure if we need it, so we kind of put it there just as a reference. So we could continue building through that whole area. It's all buildable.
Okay, well, that was my question. Is it 44 acres of buildable, or is it closer to like 38 acres because of some of the waterways and the way the topography and stuff is?
Yeah, the water features all the way in the top right-hand corner, that's the only piece that's really impractical.
Okay.
Thank you. I do like the fact that it's cluster development. I do like the fact there's open space. That's about where the positives end for me. I feel that the density is excessive for the area, and I understand that we have a consistency with the original zoning, but that was done based on a defunct rule or defunct policy. That also took into consideration the golf course. Now, perhaps if this was tied to another golf course or something, the density would make more sense. At what point, in my view, do you say enough is enough? You set the precedent here with the zoning, we can continue to move on in perpetuity with that, saying, well, this was granted, but it was granted directly around that golf course in the mid-2000s for a reason. I would also say, two other points, it's inconsistent with the 2050 plan that we, this very board approved, as far as the density goes. And again, if we're 10, 15 years down the road, things have changed. I could see where we could make an argument, but we had surveys, we had citizen committees, we had hearing after hearing, and it was ratified by the Board of County Commission. We can't just dismiss that. So that weighs on me. Also, this is contingent on the completion of 12-mile creek expansion, which, again, has not been funded. So in my opinion, the ability to build this out is purely speculative. And for those reasons, I do not support this rezoning. Any further discussion, or do we have a motion?
I make the motion that we deny it.
I second.
All right, we have a motion to deny because it is...
What you just said, inconsistent.
Inconsistent? What?
Inconsistent with the 2050 plan?
There we go. We have a motion to deny because this is inconsistent with the 2050 plan. We have a second from Mrs. Duda.
Second.
All in favor of denial of this rezoning? All opposed? Thank you. At this time, Mr. Mcateer, Mr. Berry, you're welcome to join us. Which brings us to our next agenda item, the planning staff report.
I've got two items to talk about. The first one, if you'll look under tab number two in your booklets, you should see 2023 planning meeting schedule. Everybody good? Okay. So Amy took a look at the calendars. These are the dates. Most of these are the second Tuesday, sorry, first Tuesday. A couple of, I got ahead of myself. A couple of them are the second Tuesday because of holidays. Typically, when a holiday falls on the Monday, the Board of County Commissioners, both their meeting to the Tuesday, and then we shift our meeting to the second Tuesday. So that's why you see a little bit of variation there. And check with Lynn and do it there. So the board is okay with these meeting dates. We can adopt the 2023 meeting calendar.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Some.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
The next item I wanted to briefly talk about was, just a ten minutes ago, it was a good idea to talk about, look forward, less to see as far as presentation with rezoning applications that are presented. And I've had a couple of questions, first to the board members, to extra material. We try to provide that, but once we get those questions from town to town, we like to throw that into the entire board, and we don't mind providing that. We have a lot of information sort of at our fingertips, if you will, and Bjorn, you've got some, if you want to show that we could do.
Yeah.
So we kind of want to show you some of the information that we've got, some of the things that we might be able to extract, that we might be able to provide you, and if it's something you want to see in the future, we can certainly do that.
So this, just three slides, talks about the topic of development impacts, which you struggle with, we struggle with, county commissioners struggle with, asking for information to kind of understand, put it in perspective, like what's happening, what's the impacts. And what we want to note here is that, depending on how you ask the question, you're going to get different information. And so lifecycle project, pre-submit, required of all developments, minor subdivisions, major subdivisions, Board of Adjustment for, you know, special use permit type of things, rezonings, they all have a pre-submit meeting. We have them weekly, sometimes twice a week. People come in, they spit all ideas, sometimes they get bad information, and they're like, oh, man, this is, it's not viable, and they go away. Or they say, okay, got it, I'll make those changes based on your input, and I'll move ahead. And then they actually either get submitted as rezonings, and you might see them, or they're Board of Adjustment cases, and Board of Adjustment will see them, or they're just by right development, and you'll never see them. And they just get processed through the development process. That can take, as you heard from Keith for the previous rezoning, these developments take a long time. And so when something is approved, the feedback loop can be years. Think of the Mill Bridge development, it's been under development for a decade. So, you know, the idea of like, holy cow, it's like a thousand-plus unit development. Yeah, it is, but it takes, you know, its absorption rate might only be 100 units a year, for example. So then it's when you start seeing impacts, like what's the impact... So then it's when you start seeing impacts, like what's the impact on the community? Obviously, construction can be an impact. People complain about the truck traffic, they complain about the noise, they complain about the runoff from clear cutting the site. We've certainly seen that. Then the occupancy, when stuff actually gets sold, that's when the school impacts start happening. That's when the normal traffic impacts, apart from just eighteen-wheelers and dump trucks going in and out of the site, occur. For commercial and industrial, it runs the gamut. It could go from neutral to very intensive, depending on what type of commercial or industrial usage you're talking about here. So we're not even going to speculate. But when it comes to residential development, it's fairly predictable. We have a pretty good handle on what the student generation dynamics are, land cover changes are, and traffic impacts are, and we present those, and you can consider them in approvals, as can the Board of Commissioners. So at what phase you're asking for information from us, the impacts are going to be very different. Like, if we're just talking about stuff that's submitted, that's one thing. If you're talking about what's actually being constructed right now, it's something very different. And we have data that we keep up with. We have a pretty good site called Community Spatialist that gives information on permits, and I'll bring that up in a bit, talk about strengths and weaknesses of it. It's regularly updated, and it has a refined query tool. You could draw a circle around like an intersection or part of town, or maybe you could draw it around a municipality and find out what kind of permits are there. Problem is, it's not all permits. Monroe and Waxaw do their own permits, and both of them are on fire right now. I would guesstimate that they are forty percent of all the development occurring in the county. And we don't have visibility of what's happening there. They do their own thing, they can share information with us, but they don't have to, and it's not on a routine basis. Minor subdivisions, we bring that up because a lot of development occurs in the unincorporated part of the county through minor subdivisions that are small, just breaking off a piece of land here and there, or breaking off multiple pieces of land and building homes. It's mainly local in terms of who's building it and who's selling it. But we have seen more of that recently with people stripping out eight lots, which is the upper limit to be considered a minor subdivision, and building eight homes right in a row. And you will see that happening, and there'll be no real notification about it.
I asked you a question about that.
Yes, sir.
In the minor subdivision, eight lots, so I do that this year, and in three years I strip off enough.
No, cumulative forever.
Thank you, that's what I needed to do.
And the weakness of that is, we have a map that shows all the minor subdivisions go back from when we started this. Like, I think the first year was like maybe seventy.
Seventy-eight.
Well, that was the zoning was, but we have these minor subdivisions that go back even further. So we have a map, let me show you, it's awesome. Thousands of points. The problem is, as you look at the graph over time, it dips, and if you select by year, certain areas will disappear because our municipalities have evolved over time. And we used to do the land planning for a lot of these communities, even Indian Trail, Stallings, up until like the nineties, we'd be doing their work, therefore we'd have data on it. But now it's a black hole of information for things like this because they don't come to us, they process it themselves, we don't see it. Therefore, again, our information is incomplete. Then you talk about rezonings. We have posted that for 2017 through now and a dashboard. Again, it has a very refined query tool, has information about each rezoning. You can click on it, find out details about it. Again, it doesn't include the municipal rezonings, and the impacts are not related to the rezonings. Great, you see a rezoning there. The impacts of it might not be felt in the instance of this rezoning. If approval was in 2022 or January of 2023, you might not see the impacts of it till 2025 or 2027, depending on their absorption rate for their lots. So they show information, but to say they tell the picture of the impacts of development is incomplete. So I'll show each of these examples, and we can email out the slideshow, which has the hyperlinks to them. So this is the Spatialist tool. So here's permits, the most important part. Click in here, we'll zoom in, we'll look at just residential. And we're just going to look at homes, we're going to turn it on, and here's all these homes, just in the last twelve months, shows where they're located. You can click on any one of them, find out information about it. You can see down here, here's the impact of the rezoning for the, wait, no, that's not it. Where's the one for Colter, for Crest Winds? Up here. Yep, there's the Crest Winds one. You see that thing is popping right now. All the, this has all been planted, this is maybe a quarter of that overall site. You can see, this is just twelve months, just right in a row. So that's very explicit, very clear in terms of construction activity. That's an impact of the approvals, the decision-making process that this board and the county commissioners ultimately do. But the decision to approve this rezoning, I'm going to go back to this site, which is our dashboard of all the rezonings. You go in and you look at that rezoning, that rezoning was here, and you can see that it was from 2019, and it was approved, and there's a site plan associated with it. So the feedback loop, again, is in the years. So it depends on what questions you're asking in terms of what the impacts are.
Curious that the planning board voted to deny that one.
Yes, you did. And so that's just an example of it. You can query it in different ways, like here's the Lasso tool. I just want to learn about, you know, the ones in this area, so I'll do like this. And then I can get a roll-up of the information. Oh, current summary. So the idea of information about just this area, talks about how, you know, it was virtually nothing, and then it has been pretty active this year. And so this is a tool, and this is actually through, like I said, it's through a tax office, but it's tied in pretty closely with our permit information. It's a nice tool. Again, the rezoning, like for example, after this meeting, I will be going into my account for this site and going to this rezoning here. And I will be updating this to say denial, and I'll be updating this one to say denial, and it'll update these charts. So if you wanted to see all the rezonings that the planning board has denied since 2017, I would just do this, and it sorts it. So you can see the implication of the planning board versus staff, where we've recommended denial, versus the county commissioners, where they've recommended denial. And again, this is a tool that's available right on the homepage of our planning department webpage, our website. So I will then go to the minor subdivision one. Again, look at that, forty-two hundred points of information, starting from 1975, really in earnest in 1978. And you see all these numbers, you see that Monroe has been self-sufficient, the exception of this one little unincorporated dot in the middle from, I don't know when, click on it, find out though, from 1991. So thirty years ago, we had to do one that was essentially surrounded by Monroe. Otherwise, Monroe's been on its own. But then you look at, say, I'm going to just show numbers from 2021, you'll notice that this area is empty because Marvin does their own thing, Weddington does their own thing, Stallings, Indian Trail, municipalities do their own thing. So what we're seeing is the lots pushing out further into the rural area, and you can compare that with, say, nineteen, say, nineteen eighty-six, when they're inside a lot more of the municipalities, and it's more distributed. Now, you see in the western part, Sandy Ridge Township area, not so much. This is fun to play with, it does show some trends, but again, it does have weaknesses because now it's much more incomplete in terms of the municipalities. But I would say, even with all the municipalities, who are between two-thirds and three-quarters of all the development in the county, the fact that we still have this many minor subdivisions happening is notable. It means that, one, there's people who don't like living in HOAs, so the idea of breaking off a couple lots and being able to do your own thing with your property is attractive still, and we see that. And we can show where it's located, and if you want to learn more about them, you can click on them and get information. It's like the parcel number, it tells you how many parcels were involved, what year, and if you want to call us, call us and tell us that file number, we'll tell you all about it. So that's what this site does. And you want to see just the New Salem ones? We can do that, too. So this is a really good site, it'll allow you to sort them in a variety of ways. This is just showing off, letting you know the information we have, but also letting you know about the weaknesses in the information. And with that, it's an open-ended discussion for what we can do to help you have a handle on what's happening in Union County as you make decisions and weigh in on plans, because your job is to weigh in on plans as well. You certainly did with the comprehensive plan. As we embark on smaller area plans in the future or potential updates to the UDO, you're going to be involved as well. So, you know, what information do you like to receive? How frequently would you like to receive it? Would you like to use it to communicate your observations to the Board of Commissioners? To say, on behalf of the planning board, these are our thoughts about how growth is going in the county? You could do that. But, you know, we're here to serve the board, planning board and the Board of Commissioners. We have a lot of information, some of it's always there, and you can look at it as much as you want, but some of it is kind of a one-off, and it requires some work. And so we have to balance those things.
Jordan, do we have a place where we can actually go to see what the county has in the way of municipal water availability and possible future plans for municipal water availability and then sewer availability and the plans for that?
We do, you don't, because you might be a terrorist.
Exactly.
I mean, seriously.
As far as capacity goes, there is a monthly report that's given to the county commissioners. It's part of their agenda package. It's not presented, it's just given to the board's information. But if you look at their agendas online, it gives a monthly report of the capacity at the sewer plant. So that doesn't get your question about water, but it's a monthly sewer capacity. We can certainly, if you're interested, we can get that information, we can give it to us.
The public works and frankly, schools have a much, I think Union County Board of Education has a much better comprehensive idea about municipal and unincorporated Union County development.
Yes, they do.
And if we could get, in my opinion, if we could get that data, I would be very interested in it. I can call them, I don't need you to call them. But what they don't provide is absorption data, and this goes to your question, which is if you have, if we have twenty thousand permanent home sites today, and you, to your point on Waxaw, it takes ten years to absorb that, there's a crossover point out there for infrastructure, schools, water and sewer, and I'm just interested in that data. And I think members of our community are very interested in it because they're driving in it every single day.
They, the school board or the school district staff do provide us for each individual case, we always, and it was included in your packet, your staff, the staff report, to say, you know, the percentage, the utilization for the elementary, middle, high school that would serve this rezoning is X percent. If you were to drill down and ask for more, they could tell you these developments have been approved in the area that would be served by it. No doubt about that. That is, they are, you're right, they are probably the most comprehensive perspective on this because the municipalities all know to feed them. Problem is, it doesn't tell you how long it's going to for them to be built. But yes, in terms of the absorption rate, that information does exist. It does vary by development type, and they, the school system also does have charts that talk about supply and demand. You know, we project to have this many students at these different schools, and we project our capacity to be this many, and sometimes A is higher than B, and vice versa.
What I found interesting, because I went to the bond referendum, one of the meetings, and I asked that question, that they supply the municipalities in Union County with their NOD or whatever that capacity rate is. So I asked, I said, okay, so say you have a development with, I don't know, three hundred homes. What is the state average or the household average of how many children are in that household? And they said that's at a state level, and they couldn't give me a number. It used to be two-point-five with the dog and the two cars. But now, and I brought up, and, you know, not trying to be disrespectful here, but there's certain nationalities that don't have an average of two kids, they have five, and then there's some that have one. So my question was always, what's the average of the per household that they're doing in order to do what the capacity is?
County wide is point-five.
What is it?
Point-five.
Point-five?
Yeah, we have, Union County Public Schools has approximately forty thousand students, we have approximately eighty thousand households, point-five.
That's every...
That's a blanket statement, because you're, I'd be curious what the numbers would be for the new development versus the overall.
Well, suburban versus rural is where you get that.
They vary. They vary, but they also vary over time.
And age.
Well, they, well, yeah, but they vary, they vary over age of the development because the first five years is kind of the hotspot. That's when you move in with your kids. And then it peaks within ten, and then it tails off, so that after twenty to twenty-five, even a hot neighborhood is roughly at the county average.
You get into a more natural...
Turnover.
Yeah, not everybody moves in one.
Is that number trending up in recent years?
I will say that our county's growing, and our school system population is not growing as fast, which is primarily a result of charter and private schools more so than childless couples moving, or childless households moving to Union County. We have had thousands of seats.
But to that end, part of the UCPS budget that's approved by the county commission goes to charter schools, does it not?
Yes, yeah, twenty goes out the door to the charter schools, but they aren't UCPS facilities that are serving them.
No, but we're paying for it nonetheless.
Sure, absolutely.
They pay the number of kids.
Yeah, we have that information, they have that, we only have that information because they gave us that information.
I just, I think, you know, from my perspective, it's like there's nobody flying at forty thousand feet looking at the entire county.
I agree.
And these five or six very significant infrastructure challenges we have that's able to communicate, and maybe y'all have it, to our various planning, or twelve municipalities plus the counties, zoning boards to make sure they're aware of the impact these decisions are having. And I just don't, I've been here for four months, I don't see it. So other than being able to spot-check a single item and say, you know, I drive down seventy-five, five times a month, there is nothing where this place is going. But you go to Weddington or Waxaw or Indian Trail, and, you know, there's a huge parcel for sale in downtown Waxaw right now. I can't wait to see what they do there. You know, I just, I see a train wreck coming if we don't figure out.
And I guess where I was going with my request, and I know I've been bothering you guys a lot, and I apologize for that, I just need a lot of information. But where I was going with this is, and I was trying to really make it as simple as possible, is, because a picture's worth a thousand words. So I was looking at the situation where you're presenting a development, a potential rezoning development, and all I was looking for is like, almost like have a blown-up map around it to kind of provide what other developments or, and it doesn't have to be all the permitting and the construction that's starting, but just what we know of in that area, and then maybe color-coded gradients of maybe the water issues. Where's your schools? The road structures? So I was just looking for when something's presented, it kind of goes out a little bit, it's maybe not at that four-thousand, four-hundred thousand feet, but it's a snapshot. So you can kind of get a feel for how saturated that area is. Because I don't know all the developments, but I do the same thing. I drive around prior, I try to do as much homework as possible, and I try to drive around these areas where some of these things are being presented so I can get an actual visual myself of what's going on.
I agree with you. A map is a lot more helpful, I think.
Like, for example, as a part of the comprehensive plan process a few years ago, so this was done in probably 2019, maybe 2020, we did the most recent three full years worth of dwelling units and mapped them. And this is, it doesn't even consider the municipal boundaries because we know where all the homes are via the parcel information. So we, you know, we mapped this out, and this just shows you where growth was happening. And then you compare that to the...
This isn't the public domain, this is just your domain.
No, I mean, if you want this, you can have it. This is referenced in the comprehensive plan.
Gotcha.
And then this map, this is the adopted growth plans for the county through 2050. This doesn't say we have predetermined where all these homes are going to go. This just says, based on... says, based on the, based on the municipal and county land use plans, road networks, available land, land use plan recommendations, where the projected growth in this county through 2050 would go. And this has informed our water and sewer planning. This has informed, obviously, land use planning. This has informed transportation planning. It has informed school planning. And all of the municipalities have the same information. And so we have, we have some awareness of-
Where are you, how are you forecasting, how are you forecasting some of this? Like, for example, I'm looking at the 16 and 75 intersection.
Yes.
Just north of Waxaw, you're saying 101 to 250 units. That parcel's a lot bigger than that.
I know it is.
And, and you will see it shortly. There's a big plan coming.
At the, at the time, when this was, when this forecast was done in 2018, it wasn't in the town of Waxaw. And our land use plan was a lot lower density than Waxaw. So this gets updated every four to five years. So in 2024, I would say you'll, we'll have new maps that reflect this going up to 2025.
At the railroad intersection, you're talking about 250?
Or more. Some of these might be 1,000 units.
Or more. I can tell you right now, that's never going to happen, but, well, I shouldn't say that.
It's a huge area. You're talking-
I shouldn't say never.
I disagree. You're talking about probably a couple thousand acres in that polygon.
That's right there.
So-
This is, this is in the 2050 plan?
Yes, sir. This is adopted information. This is what has been used, like I said, in a variety of planning efforts, which is wonderful because-
Now, has somebody approached you and that's where this came from? Or y'all are just looking at it, kind of pie in the skies, "I'm looking at this."
The man, the consultant who developed this model lives right here. He-
Well, I went out 601 and you see this 101 to 250 unit kind of crescent out there, moving back towards 70 forties. There's nothing out there. So he had to have some idea to say that's going to be-
Well, all this is, this is baked in, what's baked into this are the availabil, mind you, this is mine, this is through 2050. So a sewer line might be projected to not happen until 2040. Okay, well, then you'll see 10 years of reaction to that. Same with water lines, available land, land use plans, transportation, infrastructure, proximity. That's why you see the impact of the Monroe Expressway. If that weren't there, a lot of those areas wouldn't be nearly as green.
Yeah.
So this isn't that helpful for you in your, in your day-to-day efforts, but it's just, it's just to depict that we have big picture analysis as well to put things in perspective. And, but I do want to say, I think, I think your, your point about the availability of the U C P S data, that's honestly a good thing to use for big picture perspective. And something they gave us as a part of the comprehensive plan process-
Before you change, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So looking at, just back to the expressway, how much of that is in unincorporated Union County versus under municipal zone?
Less than half, I would say. In spite of the interchange, at the interchanges? Definitely less than half.
Is there any discussion of an overlay district to slow down residential development on those interchanges?
I mean, both of those-
They're inside the municipalities.
Well, and they're getting annexed too. And they get annexed. A lot of the Union County is being annexed into my borough.
Especially at like 601 Morgan Mill, a lot of annexation happening there.
And that's the plan because of the expressway.
I mean, that's, that would require, that would require some joint coordination with the municipalities that they may not be interested in.
The applicant had a map this evening that he showed, and I can't remember exactly, but it had multiple colors on it, something about sewer something or other.
Yes.
Where did he come up with that?
Union County Public Works.
Union County Public Works. What was it showing? He went through it really quick.
It just showed the, essentially the drainage basins where the sewer goes.
Okay.
Like some, like some areas would flow towards Crooked Creek, some areas would flow toward Charlotte, some areas would flow towards Waxaw, some areas would flow towards Monroe.
So when you hear folks talk about, you know, the county is at capacity on sewer, that's true in some areas. For example, 12 Mile Creek, that's our largest sewer, it is operating, it is almost at capacity. But there's areas, 6 Mile Creek Drainage Sewer, sorry, Sewer Service Area, for example, that's Marvin, most of Weddington, that actually flows into a pump station that goes to potentially pumps into McAlpine, West Side Dripping Plant in Charlotte. That area is fine. So, because we have a contract with the city of Charlotte to do that.
But we're not, we're not privy to where those, where you guys are thinking about putting new lines in or anything like that. We're not privy to any of that.
No, we, no, my, my statement earlier about saying, "Oh, we can't show it to you." Because the specific network of all the lines, we have access to it, but it's a password-protected site because frankly, post 9/11 stuff. It used to be, yeah, those maps easy. Here you go. And it's, and it's foolish to say, "Oh, yeah, we're hiding them." All you do is look for the manhole covers. But we can't, we can't just show you that. We just can't throw that map up there.
Are the maps really the resource you want? Or is it, you want the charts of the capacity?
The district of where it drains to is definitely something that's pretty easy to show. There's nothing special about that.
So essentially, if you had a district and you showed capacity for a given district, I mean-
That's, that's part of the staff, that's part of the Public Works staff comments in the report to say, to give the narrative of the sewer system. Either they can't serve it or they're full.
Is that information available? So for example, if you say, "Here's a 12 Mile Creek basin, here's the capacity remaining."
I don't know that that's that helpful because-
Why wouldn't it be?
Because the timeline of when they actually build their stuff is not set to a specific year. It could wiggle by several years, depending on the market, depending on them going bankrupt. Who knows?
Well, we would-
And the same goes for all those other developments that are also in the pipeline, the metaphorical pipeline, to get that capacity and start getting served by Union County Sewer.
We're the ones that are in perpetuity. Like, like there's one that's being built now.
Sure.
It's 10 years.
Yeah, we could, we could tell you the percent utilization for the plant. I don't know, I could tell you the percent utilization for the lines that go to that plant.
I don't think we need the lines. We would, what would help me specifically would be saying, first off, here's what capacity this basin is at as of today. And then the second number saying, here's what capacity this basin has been already allocated. So if you're at 93%, but you've allocated 100%, it's full. And I think we should know that.
And that's given in a qualitative sense. And if you, it sounds like you just want more detail to put in perspective. Because the staff, the staff report from Public Works will give you two pieces of information. One is the way they've designed it. Will it, will it be able to integrate into the network? We never take something to you that doesn't have a yes to that question. We'll never take something before it's like, "Yeah, we can't make that work." Well, kick it back to square one. So you'll always have a yes if something comes before you to say, "Yes, it will stitch into the network." The second question of, is there capacity to serve it or not? That is answered with a yes or no. Yes, there is capacity or no, there is not.
That's subjective. So again, right now, if 12 Mile Creek is at 93% capacity, I'm just throwing that number out. I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
So yes, there is capacity. Now, has it already been allocated? Yeah, it has. So you can't technically build it, but it's, if, you see where I'm going with this.
What we can, what we can do, and this is what Public Works provides, is they provide a report for each plant, for each service area, showing what they call, I'm probably going to get the terminology wrong, but I think they call it committed capacity. So that's, that's capacity that's actually, or existing flow, I'm sorry. So this is what's going into the plant today. And then they have committed capacity, which is capacity that is existing flow plus permitted flow. So if that, if a developer has a permit and it's not built yet, that, that flow, you got to count. So they, they have those, they have those numbers.
Is there a resource that's publicly available for that?
That's, that's-
Part of the regular report.
...they provide to the County Commissioners. But we can, we can provide that as part of the staff report.
And I think your question about, is that constr, because you knew the answer, I think, about the Waxaw 12 Mile Creek plant, that they haven't awarded the construction part of that expansion yet. So the question of, is there capacity there? If that plant is not funded, the report on whether capacity's available becomes very different because we would then say, based on existing and committed flows, there is no capacity to serve this proposed development.
But right now, are we saying that there is capacity assuming that we get funded? Because that's a big assumption right now.
But then, was it going to take like 10 years to build that?
No.
No, it's pretty fast.
About three, I think they said 2025.
2025. If they move forward expeditiously.
You're thinking Crooked Creek.
With the one up on Ridge Road that you saw last, two, last month.
That one has to be fully, I mean, if it's approved, that has to be fully permitted.
Yes, not even permitted.
12 Mile already permitted up to a certain number of gallons. This is just a matter of designing plans, getting those ones approved, getting them to be-
And everything is approved except for the budget.
Right. That's a very quick process.
You say that.
All it, all it takes is the will to do so. So-
And a lot of cash.
The question of, is the yes that capacity's available, I think the, I think the staff report actually said in here that the, that the capacity wasn't there right now to actually build it. I want to pull up the staff report because I-
I just want to know what we're looking at. I'd hate to say yes to something where, "Oh, yeah, there's capacity," as long as they approve that.
Well, no, no, I, I want to say that for this, for this specific situation, which is why Keith mentioned, we aren't going to start building until 25 anyway, which is when the expansion will be complete. So the, the staff report is saying, yes, this can be stitched into the network. However, if this were to be built today, we couldn't serve it. That's the answer. But that's not their timeframe anyway. And we would be okay with that until we get a definitive no that that capacity that they're banking on in 25 is not going to happen.
So in that instance, what would have happened to vesting if it was something on behalf of the county? If they say, "Look, we're trying to build. We want to build, but you guys can't give us capacity." Do they lose the vesting or do they have a, a case to extend that?
I mean, if the capacity is not there to serve it, they're not, they can't build the service.
Correct. But then they would have an argument to say, by no fault of their own, can they not?
I would put that in the courts.
And, and that's, and that's the issue.
Yeah. It's very, it's a good point. Honestly, the minute, if the Board of Commissioners were to say that plant expansion at 12 Mile is not happening, the dynamic for these rezonings becomes very different. Because we, because then we have nothing to even hope to point to in terms of expansion that could serve this. Because then we have Public Works saying, "We can't serve this. We have no foreseeable way of serving this from a, from a treatment perspective."
So, so let's go worst case. I'm sorry, go ahead. What, let's go worst case. Let's assume the expansion plan falls short and we freeze the development of the Crooked Creek plant. Y'all all go home for the next year? I mean, I'm being a little bit serious here, but-
No, that, just, that doesn't, there's always things to do. We could go pick up trash or do code enforcement or whatever.
And, and there's, there's also septic system development.
So by right.
Yes.
By right.
And we're seeing quite a bit of that. We are seeing a lot of-
You're going to see septic, you're going to see packaged plants.
Actually, what we saw over, you know, up until recently, when the, you know, interest rates started, started falling, we were actually seeing land was so valuable that, you know, it used to be people only wanted to do conventional septic systems because they were cheap. They didn't cost a whole lot of money. But land became so valuable and developers were able to sell houses for more that you saw a lot of developers going out there and permitting alternative systems. That wasn't something that we had seen much of. We saw it occasionally, but we didn't see the whole developments where they were coming in and doing like, I don't know what all the types of alternative systems are, but doing all kinds of alternative systems. And we started seeing package plants.
And are we approving?
Proposed.
Proposed.
Yeah. We haven't seen any approvals yet.
So back to the bypass. And this predates me, obviously. Has there been any discussion about creating an overlay? I was on the Union County Economic Development Board. And we spent a lot of time trying to convince the County Commission to come to the Planning Department to create an overlay district for the unincorporated section so that it didn't get absorbed with many storage facilities and, and gas stations. Has there been any further discussion on that or any process?
So, and yours, what was there?
I just, this is the adopted 2050 plan. The areas in gray are municipalities. You look at the bypass.
Gotcha.
Very little.
Very, very little.
And to Pam's point earlier, there's a high likelihood if they, say you have an overlay district. If I'm a developer and I go to you and I say, "Hey, I want to do this." Well, it's an overlay district. Okay, well, this municipality, as long as I join, if I get annexed, they'll give me what I want.
Potentially.
And we've got plenty of examples to show where that's been done and continues to happen.
But to answer your question, you know, fully, all those purple areas and then that large blob circle that you sort of see underneath the gray there, those are commercial industrial corridors that the Commissioners put up. So those unincorporated areas that you see are primarily employment corridors, employment centers, retail.
And the only reason you're seeing them is because you look at the gray hashed area or the green, the light green hashed areas, look like mint chocolate chip. Those are intended to be residential, but they're donut holes. And the perspective of the county was, it was kind of a split the difference on ETJ. It was saying, "We don't like ETJ. However, we recognize that these areas should get closed over time as development occurs. So if you want to rezone to something, a higher density, you need to go to one of the municipalities because by policy, we would recommend denial of it." We did not apply that to commercial and employment uses because, and we didn't want to call out any names, so we just painted with a broad brush. We didn't have faith that collectively, employment and industrial tax-based type of decisions would be made consistently in these areas that we would agree with. So we retained that flexibility. That's why you saw rezoning up here for the Steel Point one last year. So this area, we would still exert land use planning decisions on where rezonings were required. But for these areas out here, Weddington, Indian Trail, Wesley Chapel, Stallings, sorry, not Stallings, Mineral Springs and towards Waxaw and Marvin, these areas that are just small, unincorporated areas, we would encourage them to annex into the municipality if they wanted to do something higher than their base zoning, which we thought was a reasonable compromise.
Thank you.
So who, and I know I'm switching gears here. So who decides, because we brought up the clusters in this last presentation here. Who decides when those committee decisions go to the Commissioners? I mean, will it before the, the change in guard? Do we know?
I don't think it will.
Yeah. Who decides that? Is it the Commissioners who puts it on their, their docket?
The Commissioners.
Yeah.
Chairman, Chairman controls the agenda. Or Chairwoman.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
But in terms, I mean, in terms of, you know, helping you get perspective, honestly, I think the school system reports, and I brought up the, the example that they gave to us like two years ago, they just gave, here's an example. They, they drilled it down into clusters. And I thought that was a really good way of putting it. So like, here's the Cuthbertson Cluster. And they put it in perspective. They talked about the enrollment and the utilization. MCR, I guess, would be the mobile homes or the mobile classrooms? Yeah. They talked about the cohort, which is, you know, the, what, what surge are they getting? Is it all elementary or is it that the elementary has passed through and now it's all high school surge? You can see that they're kind of skewing older, which the county as a whole is and Cuthbertson's similar. So you can see where the age groups are. Developments, these are active. The problem is, again, you don't know when these are coming due. You know they're out there. How long it's going to take? Like one of them's, you know, Mill Bridge is in here. It's a huge one. It's active. It's adding a lot of homes, no doubt about it. But some of these other ones could be a lot smaller. You saw how long, the one from the Stonebridge, one's from the 90s. So you're talking about a quarter century.
So when do you report or how do you get report? I don't know if it's on an annual basis of the land use in percentages, because I saw something from Union County, I think it was from the Farm Bureau. It had something to do with the agricultural, but what it was doing was percentage of land now residential versus- was doing was percentage of land now residential versus agricultural and stuff like that, and what those percent, like, I'm just, you're, you're smiling at me, am I asking a stupid question?
No, 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 it's actually a great question.
Because two months ago, we couldn't have answered it, but now we can.
We, we got a new toy for, for the floor.
But that, that statistic would be good to see.
We intend...
It's, it's, it's a, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked.
Our commitment is that by January, we're going to have county and municipal information on current land cover, change in land cover, as well as how different types of residential housing types, like half acre lots versus five acre lots, how they vary in terms of percent impervious, percent forested, so that you can understand, you know, what these developments look like, and also how they change over time, because we have a time lapse of that to, so that you can understand how diff, different development types affect land cover.
But I'd also be interested, and that's awesome to hear that, and I'd also be interested to see how that compares to the strategy or the vision of Union County, of how we wanted to establish, because I'm, I'm hoping all our farmland doesn't get gobbled up, I'm hoping that there was a percentage that we are being focused on making sure we maintain versus residential, commercial, and bring in our economic development, blah, 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 but I didn't know if there was a part where we start and say, this is kind of the percentages we, we want to be, this is who we want to be when we grow up, and this is where we are, and have we crossed the line on this one and not on that one? I, I'm sorry, I'm a numbers person, I'm a stats person.
Here's, here's an example, this is City of Monroe, our urban forester used it with a meeting of the Kiwanis Club Lions Rotary, Rotary, it's all like two weeks ago, this was presented, as well as a couple others, this is the City of Monroe as of 2020, can tell you that 7,000 acres are in cropland or lawn, 4,200 acres are impervious, you can see the gray, kind of tracks with the street network, as well as industrial areas, there's the runway, water, trees, shrubs, trees over impervious, which is kind of wonky, but it just tells you how, are the trees, are, you have street trees essentially. And so, this is the type of output that we have now for the entire county, and we're, we're chewing on it to see what kind of story it tells.
And, and Pam, sort of get at your, that, that big picture question, I mean, a, a lot of these are tools that, that were used to develop the, the conference of plan, and that's, that's exactly what it did, it gave us a, a guide as to where, you know, we wanted to be in, you know, in 2050. Of course, we'll, that'll be updated, you know, we'll, you know, we're not going to sit on it until 2050, things change, markets change, so we will revisit that at, at some point, but that plan, it, it reflected, you know, community goals and, and community ideals, and, and one of the things that came out of that was the, the idea to preserve more farmland and preserve more rural businesses, if you want to call it that. Because you, you saw a huge retraction of that mixed residential district, which was in the old conference of plan, which allowed a lot of high density, that, that got pulled back a lot. The, the rural residential agricultural area expanded somewhat, and these are tools that, that we can use, again, we, we can't use this tool today to see how the 2050 con plan is performing, but over time, we'll be able to use this tool to see, okay, what kind of rezoning decisions have we made, are, are these decisions helping us get to that 2050 goal, or, you know, or, or do we need to change? Is there something that we're doing wrong? You know, what policies can we put in place going forward to help us get there?
Right, and see, and I'm not against growth, by all means, I am not, because it's just, it's prosperity for the area, I just don't, I, I, because I take this job, I take this role very seriously, in that I want to be able to be proactive than reactive, so anything that you get prior will help you make that decision, because I would hate to see it become overdeveloped, I'd rather see it be, you know, growing in the right percentages of commercial and residential, and, and, and as our needs are met. So, that's kind of, I guess, where a lot of my questions come from, is rather than do a knee jerk, two years from now, go, oh, damn, we missed that mark, more looking like, you know what, maybe we temper it back here and we, we do something more there. So, that's, that's why I, I, I'm constantly bothering you guys, I'm just trying to get some information to help do my role, that's all.
Can I make a recommendation since three or four, and then, and this has been great, rather than have 10 of us call the school board tomorrow, would you call the school board and then send the material over?
Well, no, what do you want? Because I have a lot of...
Just any kind of a link to...
I just don't want all of us to start calling.
The resources.
Hey, you send me all the cluster reports, and then you got, they got 10 phone calls.
Yeah, that's the thing, because you, how many, how many high school clusters do we have? Eight? I don't know. So, you, do you want eight individual cluster reports, or do you want a collective roll-up?
I actually only need one slide out of each of those reports, and if you go back and open it, it's the bar charts of the, of the rat moving through the snake.
Yeah, yeah, they, they have that.
That's the, that's the, that, uh, slide four.
Yes.
That's the story.
Yeah, it is a story.
That's the, that's the whole story.
It varies by school area, by, by enrollment area.
Absolutely, so Forest Hills is going to be very different from Parkwood.
Okay.
But I think that helps us see, because behind every one of those students is a house.
It is.
I still would like to see a map at some point and see, you know, kind of as we...
He, that was the website he's going to send you.
Full website.
The links to your plan.
Oh, you're talking about the, the slideshow, the stuff we brought before? Yeah, I can, I can send those for sure, but, you know, they're, again, we're just a fraction of all the development in this county, I mean, we're like at most a third of what's happening in Union County right now.
So, in the...
We're in charge of it.
You're in charge of some of it. Depending, depending on the, depending on the issue, if you're in charge of the school system, you're in charge of educating all of it.
We're in charge of something, we're in charge of commissioners, and they, they go whatever.
Well, you said that they are probably have the most comprehensive snapshot of the data.
Yes.
Not you, they have.
No, yeah, absolutely, I agree with that.
So, rather than all this call the school board, and you recreating it, because they getting municipal data, that's the...
And, and it sounds like when we get rezonings, we should include information for that specific cluster that looks like this.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
And I think it should include, you already get transportation impacts, you already get the water and sewer, so, thank you.
So, I've just got one more question before we drag this out, because we could get, we could go into this all night. There's no minutes to prove, do we know when we, we expect those?
Yes.
Okay, so off two cents a minute, just for the record. Very good, thank you, that's all I've got.
It was a good discussion, we're always happy to present, I feel like we have a lot more than we did years ago, just data's gotten bigger, and we can do that, the problem is you can get paralysis by analysis sometimes. So, we want to make sure we are respectful and give you what you, what you ask for, but also with our thoughts of what's actually relevant. So, we'll get that school board information, we think that'll serve a lot of purposes, and we'll send this slideshow out to everyone and go from there.
Very good, thank you, Bjorn. At this time, we move along to brief comments, we'll start, Ms. Duda.
Just thanks, Bjorn and Lee, for answering all these questions, taking the time to do this, you know, thanks for the, the board here, and I have to ask you something.
Are you, Mr. McAdoo?
Thank y'all for putting it together.
Mr. Berry?
I concur with that and add, thank you again for putting that training together.
Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Griffin?
I enjoyed the training, that was great.
Vice Chair Fisher?
Just a big thanks, you guys did a great job, thank you.
All right, and thank you, thank you, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, good night, everybody, it is...